Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Wednesday, April 30th, 2025. It's 9:06 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Commissioner Fornier to my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus, to his left, Commissioners Grant and Mihia, both participating on our virtual platform. County Manager Leonard Hernandez is back. You can see, inter-county manager.
Thank goodness.
Not inter-county manager. See how quickly I used to say that? Just kidding. Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker is here as well. Okay, we've got some miscellaneous topics this morning, and public virtual attendance will be available on Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting by the Board and is distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up in our work session is Thurston Regional Planning Council, Regional Transportation Plan.
Thanks so much, Chair, and coming to, yeah, please come and join us.
Should I sit here?
You might sit in on this.
I will.
Yeah, absolutely. Just as the camera.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. I'll let you introduce yourself and.
Oh, thank you.
Thankful that you're here.
Should I, where do I point?
Anywhere.
Anywhere, all right.
And you go down to go forward?
Good.
The floor's yours.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for making the time to hear me this morning. I'm Mark Daly. I'm the Executive Director at Thurston Regional Planning Council, and we are at a point where for our regional transportation plan, this is really the foundational document for our region, for our transportation plan. And so as we, and we update this every five years, and so as we look to do that, thank you for making the time because we want to make sure as many people have a chance to hear about this 25-year plan for our region as possible, so that we can get as much public input and your all's input as this moves along. Just very quickly for those that may be watching, Thurston Regional Planning Council, frequently folks think that we are part of Thurston County. Just to make sure folks are aware, we are an independent planning organization, voluntary. So Thurston County, the cities, tribes, special purpose districts choose to be members of Thurston Regional Planning Council and plan together on issues that cross regional boundaries. And transportation is chief amongst them because, oh, did you say down? Okay, did I go too far? No, there we go. All right. Because roads don't know boundaries. And what is most important for us under state law and under federal law is that we have this 25-year transportation plan that we are updating on a regular five-year basis. This is important to our region for a lot of different reasons. One, to make sure that we're comprehensively planning for how we want to see this area grow and develop over the next couple decades, but also there is federal funding that becomes available because we have this plan in place and because of the projects that are in this plan helps then get funding to implement those projects over the next 25 years. Okay, so some key takeaways right off the bat, and I'll talk a little bit more about these in detail. So the first one is that our planned land use and roadway capacity over the next 25 years, those improvements alone will not be sufficient to meet our regionally adopted targets and goals around level of service for our transportation system. We will still make substantial progress towards those adopted targets and goals, and we can help to reduce the impacts in terms of mobility over that, over time, but it won't be sufficient to meet those level of service goals. One thing that I'll say there is that's, meeting all of that is not necessarily the goal because one of the premises of the plan is we cannot build our way out of congestion. Adding lanes and increasing capacity on the system will only get you so far. It will, people will keep on driving as long as there is room on the roads. And so keep that in mind when I say we're not meeting those goals is some amount of congestion as you're an urbanized and urbanizing area, that is what we expect to see in the transportation system. We are going to have the same kind of high-paced growth that we've experienced over the past few decades, and with that growth in population, jobs, housing, we will see increased traffic volumes.
Question about that, because I was looking at Thurston County's population growth over the last 20 years. Looks like 50,000 every decade, thereabouts.
That is, that's about, that is about right, because then we're expecting, and it'll be on one of these slides, we're expecting a little over 100,000 over the next 20 years. So, yep.
So that's still trending?
It is still, it's been a pretty steady trend when you, when you look at the trend line. It, it, yeah, it's leveling off a little bit just because as you grow, more people coming in to keep that same percentage, but it, but it's been pretty steady. We are one of the fastest growing counties in the, in the state.
That's exciting.
Oh, sorry. That's what I just said. So, sorry about that. I'll be better on the animations going forward.
You're just emphasizing your talking point.
That's right. So what's in this plan? Like I said, it's a 25-year planning horizon. We're planning for all transportation modes. So when we say that, we're, we're planning for people in their own vehicles, for buses, for people on bikes, pedestrians, trucks and freight, all those modes of transportation. It's where we set our regional goals and our policies that guide transportation, our transportation system over that time period. We have recommendations which are mainly in the form of the projects that we expect to see and want to see over the next 25 years. This plan has to be fiscally constrained, and that's the, the word the federal government uses, meaning we have to have a reasonable expectation that there will be funding available for all the pieces of the plan. If we cannot show where we think that funding could come from, we need to reduce what is in the plan. We haven't, in this case, we did not have to do that. As we did the planning, we could account for reasonably foreseeable finances to pay for these projects.
When you look at potential funding, are you, you take into consideration funding that is, could be available, like for example, state or federal funding, or funding that we know we are going to get and secure?
It is, it is the, the former. It, it, obviously it includes any funding that has been secured or that we really think we're going to get, but it also has some, some fairly large assumptions on state and federal funding. For example, on the state side, we've been pretty successful, and we've been really successful in recent years in getting state funding for, for projects in our region. And it, and this plan assumes that we'll kind of continue that success in, in getting state funding. So again, it's, it's a plan. It's not, and so it, it doesn't mean all of these things are going to happen. It's that we can identify how we could get the funding to make all of these things happen. Okay. And then future conditions, that's the big, a big part of this plan is we've got really good transportation modelers at Thurston Regional Planning Council, and our, our transportation model is, is second to none in the state. The W, I'm sorry, WashDot uses our, our model when they look at transportation issues around this region. And so we've got, we, as part of this, there is a brand new update to the model. It was a really comprehensive update that looks at what our transportation system will look like in 2050. Okay. So some of the areas of emphasis, and this is where I'll also pause a little bit. So when we were developing this update to the plan, it was almost completely done under the, the previous federal administration, and the direction and, and around how to do that planning has changed a lot over the past few months. And so this, this plan has an emphasis on safety. Safety is a huge issue for our area. As, as many people know, serious and fatal injury accidents have definitely been trending in the, the wrong direction. Really since the, since around the pandemic, we started seeing a pretty steep increase in, in some of those accidents, and especially pedestrian and bicycle versus vehicle accidents are very much on the rise. So that is an area that we really want to focus on over this, this next time period. Equity was a big focus for the previous administration and is really ingrained throughout this draft plan, as is climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. We've been doing a lot of work locally and regionally on greenhouse gas emissions, and that, that was very much a, a part of the previous administration's guidance on what we needed to do when updating these plans. We need to maintain the system we've already invested in. Every one of our jurisdictions has a backlog in maintenance and preservation. The state has a backlog. The federal government has a backlog. This is a, this is a serious issue for all of us. It costs a lot more money to redo something after it has gone too far in the wrong direction. It is so much more cost effective to try and find the funding to fully maintain and preserve the system that we have, because rebuilding it is a cost of fortune. Projects that, in this, we are definitely continuing to emphasize transit options, system efficiency, so looking for ways of, could we change striping? If we put in certain signals, can we just help the operations and the efficiency of, of the system? And then there are definitely some strategic expansions included in the plan as well. And part of the, the, what, what this is intended to do at the local, regional and state level is make sure that we have an integrated system so that it is cohesive across the landscape. The public doesn't realize, or, or it doesn't matter when, to them, when they cross from Thurston County to Olympia to Lacey. What matters is that the road's reliable, it's safe, and, and they're getting what they need out of, out of the transportation system. So that's what we're trying to achieve here. Bit more on some of the targets and goals that were, that are key to this draft. I talked about reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries. We have adopted regionally the state target, which is Target Zero by 2030. We are certainly not on, on track to meet that at the, at any level at this point. We want to increase the share of households in urban areas, especially around some key corridors that are defined in the plan, like Martin Way is a great example, looking to, to increase density in those areas that are, are served by transit and, and have a really good multimodal options.
Quick question about the Martin Way corridor.
Sure.
When your team is doing this level of planning, is there interaction with like the EDC or the cities about, or in the county, about what economic development approaches are being taken or considered?
Yes, to the, to the extent that our model is, has a land use base to it. And so part of, as we go to update, part of what we're doing is reaching out to all those entities saying, what, what kind of development do you know is going to happen? What kind of development do you think might happen? Where is that? And we're actually mapping out across the, the county assumptions of how land use will change over time, and a big component of how that land use changes is economic development. Where are businesses going to go? Where are the people that, that work at those businesses? Where are they going to live? Those kinds of assumptions are all built into our, our transportation model. And, and we work with all of your staff and the cities to make those assumptions on land use.
In the future, Commissioners, a, a concept that for the Martin Way corridor could be considered is doing some visioning with Olympia and especially Lacey about what do, what are the possibilities going forward? And if we were to envision a different, or if we were to envision economic development and community development in that area, what would that look like so that it could help prep us for potential requests from the state and feds as a combined region for that area infrastructure? But also, we could look at what work can the jurisdictions do in site development work to then, if we had a combined vision that each elected body would be supportive of, help inform, continue to inform a transportation plan, but then could be a real advertisement and lure for potential businesses, knowing that the jurisdictions are in alignment and that they're doing the work on the land use side? And then it's an opportunity to get community engagement in those areas and support and buy-in about amenity development, micro economy development, if you were to cluster different types of like businesses together, how that would feed off of each other and create synergies, et cetera?
You're right, because I feel like we're, we're pushing for the infrastructure and saying we want economic development, but that, that second half of the piece isn't sussed out, isn't discussed, isn't, isn't figured out. So to actually have a case, you need, you need to do that second piece of the work.
Yeah, I've had a very encouraging conversation with two different occasions, one with the city manager of Lacey and then one with their economic development staffer. The staffer, unbeknownst to me, lived in, in an area that I was familiar with in California, similar to Martin Way, a little bit larger scale, called Valley Boulevard, transcends unincorporated and incorporated areas right by railroad tracks and over time developed into like used car sale lots and because it wasn't necessarily seen as desirable.
That's what that all used to be, back in the day.
And what happened is the, because of some pressure on the unincorporated areas and illicit activity, the two anchor cities with the county came together and they planned, they master planned that, that out, and it's transformed into something that was on the border being blighted. And I'm not saying Martin Way corridor is anywhere near where that was, but.
You should have seen it 30 years ago. It was like used car lots and massage parlors.
Gotcha. And so now what it is, it's a, it's a combination of medical industry, there's some banking, retail, residential, all mixed into a, a uniform way, and they've been able to bring federal dollars into that as workforce development and economic development. And in chatting that through, I think there was an appetite to say, how do we come together to look at that? The reason I'm bringing that up here now is because regional planning for what that looks like is important as you look at how the corridor looks. Valley Boulevard used to be a very busy, really not pedestrian friendly, but in certain areas where they built around, that changes lights and crosswalks and what that looks like so that people can get back and forth in another areas, not really because it's more light industrial and more commercial, but that flow with, when it's planned out, it can trans, be transformative for a community.
Yeah. And I'll just mention on that, the, the Martin Way corridor strategy that was completed, that included Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia and inner-city transit, the Economic Development Council was, was a subcontractor with us on that project. And so that, that has, that work has had a focus on how do we bring the investment along that, that corridor? And so I, I'll just say that, that's a good place to start in looking at what some of the issues that we heard from the developing community around what it will take for them to invest in that corridor.
It's a very important part of the conversation. I hear you. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you, Mark?
Absolutely.
So I don't know what the, the questions are probably going to be a lot, and so I'm just wondering, should, I don't know how much time we allotted for this and.
I, I, I can get.
How much time you have?
I, I don't have too many more slides, but I can get, get through them.
Hold questions and then we'll.
Sure.
All right, let's let Mark finish up.
Sounds good.
And then we'll.
Okay. Just to finish up on the, the targets and goals, we have a goal to decrease annual, annual vehicle miles traveled per capita. The reason for that is, is twofold, from a greenhouse gas emissions standpoint and also from a wear and tear on the transportation system standpoint. Fewer vehicles, the longer our investments last. We're looking to decrease greenhouse gas emissions and increase active transportation and transit use. And how will we change over the next, I do not like animations. So as I said before, by 2050, we're expecting another 100,000 people, about 52,000 more jobs, 58,000 housing units and 52,000 more people living near transit. Those, those are not small numbers for our current population. This is, we are expected to, to maintain that high level of growth, both from an economic and from a population standpoint, and so that's what we're planning for. Within the plan, there are in the recommend, I talked about the recommendations. There are 80 regional projects that are included in this plan. Some of them were in the plan before, some of them are new, but it, it does add about 18 miles of new roadway, 36 miles of general purpose lanes and turn lanes, that's for just widening projects, 65 miles in bicycle and pedestrian facilities, 29 miles in multi-use trails, some new highway interchanges. There are a lot of different types of projects that we have planned for this, this region over the next 25 years. Just as a, and I'm so glad Public Works is here in case there are any questions on any of these project specifics, but just to give a sense, so the capacity projects that are in this plan, for the most part, these are widening projects that'll add lanes and, and/or turn lanes to existing roadways. There is a new connection, the Marvin, Marvin Road Extension, that takes Marvin, that from, takes it from Yelm Highway and connects to.
Mullen.
Thank you, Mullen. So that would be a new north-south connection. On trail, we've got a number of trail projects. You know that Gate Belmore is the, the county's high priority for kind of next on trails. There also is a expansion, a couple actually expansions in the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, one on each end is envisioned. We've got some really important improvements to State Route 507. This is around the Yelm area, our most congested area in our region right now is, is Yelm and will continue to be so. And so that's an area we're, we're looking at and really looking for solutions to improve that. And what this project is, is three new roundabouts. It's already been funded and that funding was maintained in the, the budget that they just passed, and so this will continue. And it puts in a roundabout to, in, in Pierce County at State Route 507 and State Route 702. It puts one in, the one that the county's working on right now at Bale Road and 507, and one in the city of Yelm at Bald Hill and 507. There's also another one at, in Yelm at the Costco. It's not associated with this. It was already planned. All of these, and the transportation model really shows the benefits of these. There is substantial reduction in wait times during the congested periods, having these roundabouts in place. It really helps move people through the system. And then a study that we have ongoing is the Martin Way Crossing Strategy, where we're, we received state funding to do preliminary design of up to 10. where we're, we received state funding to do preliminary design of up to ten, um, crossings of Martin Way to help improve that safety and pedestrian and bicycle access along that corridor. And that work is ongoing. Schedule here, we've got the draft out now. Uh, the public comment period is open through May ninth. We are looking to then bring that back to our Transportation Policy Board in June. And we're looking for the council to take action on this July tenth. Um, one thing I wanna, I wanna talk about a little bit before we go to questions is there's been a lot of discussion. Folks might have seen, um, a recent Olympian article about, uh, the last Transportation Policy Board meeting. Um, there, the, the new administration's executive orders, um, ha- are, 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 are stating that it is illegal for our plans and our projects to include, um, issues around diversity, equity and inclusion. And also, um, there is an emphasis on not having, um, cla- uh, greenhouse gas redu- reduction in part of, um, projects and plans. As I talked about, those were both areas of emphasis in this plan development. And so there is definitely concern that, um, this plan, although it doesn't need to be approved by the federal government, you submit it to Federal Highway Administration. And every four, uh, every five years, we go through a certification process with Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration. And, and what that, what that entails is they look at the way that we do our planning, that the, the products that we produce to ensure that they're compliant with the federal laws, rules and regs. So the discussion at the Transportation Policy Board, our, our chair, Mayor Andy Ryder of, of Lacey, um, had, had been at a National League Cities Conference where there was a recommendation of looking at, um, current plans and things that you are going to be submitting to the federal government and making sure that they, they don't include those issues that have been emphasized. Um, and that, they made, the policy board made a recommendation to the council, our, our full board, that between the draft, which is out now, and the final, which is scheduled for July, that, uh, we go through the plan and make cha- changes to, uh, come, make that, the draft plan more compliant with the executive orders, specifically those around diversity, equity and inclusion. Our council will be talking about that on Friday. Um, this has gotten a lot of attention, obviously. So I just wanna make sure everyone is, is aware of that dialogue, uh, that's ongoing and, and I'm not sure how it's gonna play out. So that is what I have for you this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, um, for being here this morning. Um, kind of timely. I was gonna.
Yep.
I was getting ready for Friday, uh, because I did have a chance to look at the, uh, Transportation Policy Board meeting and, uh, saw how that conversation went. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm looking for the next steps for adoption, but I wanna go back to the equity piece in terms of, you've mentioned the emphasis of it, but wasn't there a community survey that went out? And that was one of the things where our community put their input in and that was one of the top things that they wanted to see in transportation.
That's right. You're, 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 you're spot on. So in 2021, we did a community survey on transportation. We had excellent participation in that. Um, and, uh, there was a high, I, I, I don't have the percentage off the top of my head, but I, I, it was either seventy-something or eighty-something percent, very high percentage of, of people in support of uh, addressing equity in our transportation plan.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I sit on, uh, the County Road Administration Board, um, which is one of the statewide committees. And, um, equity and transportation has been a conversation for many years at the state level as well. And so how is this conflicting with the state priorities? I know it was, uh, recently, uh, passed away Senator Bill Ramos. It was one of his main priorities was equity and transportation. And when we talk about equity and transportation, we're not just talking about the infrastructure, but also the services. Um, and what that means to our rural communities and our underserved communities. And so how does this action from the Transportation Policy Board conflict with the state's priorities? Especially as we're seeking funding from the state as well.
Yep. So, great question. And I'll, I'll start by saying there is so much uncertainty right now. But what, what I will speak to is, um, the, in 2023, I believe it was, or maybe it was 2022, the state passed the Heal Act, the, um, uh, Healthy Environment for All Act. And, and, uh, one of the component of that was about equity and making sure that certain parts of our state government are ma- are making sure that the way they do business is, um, particularly emphasizing the needs of, uh, historically underserved communities. Um, that Heal Act, Department of Transportation was one of the, uh, one of the agencies called out specifically. And they've been working since that time on how they, the state makes, um, more equitable decisions and programs. One thing that I'll say has been unfortunate, um, is the state has been very quiet, um, with all that has happened over the past, uh, months. And so we have not received any direction from Washington State Department of Transportation on how to deal with the apparent, um, conflict between new federal executive orders and state law. Um, so I don't know how that's going to play out. One thing that I do know is that there was a new executive order that came out a couple of weeks ago that did emphasize that, that states were going to need to certify that they don't have such programs. I don't know how the state of Washington is going to deal with that yet. Um, so that is a big uncertainty. Another big uncertain.
Is that we don't have such programs a- anywhere, period, or in the transportation field in which they're evaluating applications?
Uh, well, in, in, for the case, because it would be, they, uh, the state would be making that certification to Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration. Similar, um, attestations are coming out in the new agreements for all different agencies. So I'm speaking to the USDAOT portions, but many other agencies are, uh, federal agencies are, are directed to change their template language to include this attestation that you don't run such programs.
Programs, but I mean.
And what does that mean?
Yeah.
Great question. That's one of the reasons why there are more than, uh, for the equity-based executive orders, there are more than ten ongoing, uh, lawsuits challenging the, the, the executive order for the climate-related, the unleashing, um, uh, American energy. There are even more, um, ongoing lawsuits around that. So all of that still needs to play out too, before we have some, some real clarity. But, but you're exactly right, Commissioner. So far what we've seen is just terms like equity, terms like inclusion. For what, what does that mean to have a program a- around that? Um, it's, it is unclear at this point. What we do know is that there are, I know from another, um, metropolitan planning organization in our state, that they did have, um, Federal Highway Administration, um, tag some words in a recent document and ask them to change them. So some of that is occurring.
And that whole thing, just, I'll get to you, Commissioner Fournier, but that whole thing that Commissioner Mahia just highlighted is duplicated exactly in the climate side because.
Abs- in fact, even, even more so.
Yeah, you, I mean, we would be out of compliance with state law if we were to take away all the greenhouse gas reduction efforts. We have state mandate to meet targets and get, you know, all those things, all those targets met. So we would be sued by the state government or sued by the federal government or not, not eligible for that money, but eligible for this money. Um, so yeah, there's a lot of conflict of law issues now to be.
Absolutely.
And what my, I'm really curious about the, you know, like the equity. I mean, if, if it's like, well, we don't think equity applies to, you know, road building. Okay. Um, I could, I could probably argue that it does, but if you thought that and that was like sort of a self-contained world, that would be one thing. If the federal government's trying to leverage those dollars to, to, to like eradicate a program all through, uh, all branches of government and it, you know, that's a totally different thing.
Yep.
Um, so that's what I'm curious about. Uh, we need to sh- be, stop being shocked that th- that these are things, cause that's what's happening. Like it's hap- it's happening across the board. It is, we are being sanctioned, right? And we're, we're beating, we're being treated like Russia for, for having these, you know, having these programs. And that's, that's what's gonna happen. And I mean, that, that's the reality of it. I, you know, and I, and I, I, I read the article on you guys talking about, you know, evolving or adapting your language. And I saw that there was some consternation about it, but, uh, I, I, actions speak louder than words. And it, I don't think anything is going to change our community's values, but we have to be smart and pragmatic and adapt our language. But you can maintain your values while adapting your language and moving forward and surviving the next three years. So, I mean, I, I, I hear that that's what you're trying to do and I feel that that's the smart move, you know, I, I.
I think it's smart move, but I think they're smarter than that and they realize that and it's not gonna be possible. They're gonna, that's why we're seeing these directives about what is your org- evaluating your organization? What do you have? What do you do? Um, it's not gonna be like just if I don't see the words, I won't flag the application.
We don't just get out of the source.
Yeah.
And pick a different word than equity. But, you know, like a- a- all these programs, and I think about the, the, uh, the Levy Project in Gray's Harbor where they lost eighty-four million dollars after working for ten years to be able to stop three cities from flooding three feet deep almost annually. And that was built on a rationale that it was money for, for climate change. I- i- it's a, it's a public safety project. So, you know, that money is still gonna be there somehow. You're just gonna have to call us something different, you know, instead of calling it a climate, you know, a, a, a climate-led initiative, it's a public safety initiative, but the same goals are met. And every, you know, like, so it, the, we have to figure out a way to move forward without abandoning all of our values. You know, and, and there's ways to do that. We just, we can't chew each other apart while we figure that out. And I, and I saw a little of that with TRPC trying to be, uh, adaptive and resilient in the face of a difficult situation. And, and, you know, that's, that's not how we figure it out. We have to trust each other and come together as a community and, and find mo- ways to move forward where we're preserving our values and, and also like making sure that our basic me- needs are still getting met. Cause I, I don't, I, I don't, I can't accept that, well, well, let's just let our roads degrade for the next three years and we'll figure it out then because.
The voters can figure it out then. Maybe that's what they need to see.
But, well, I, but things, they, they compound, you know? If, if you neglect something for four years, you don't necessarily, you know, get a magic wand to fix all those things you neglected the previous four years. So, you know, so there's gotta be a way to, you know, preserve your values and, 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 you know, not sell your soul while at the same time figuring out how to survive. And there has to be.
Commissioner Mahia.
Thank you. I feel the complete opposite as what Commissioner Fournier does. And I was actually going to, we're gonna be discussing this on Friday at TRPC, so now you kinda know how I feel. Um, but for me, it, it's not just about changing of the words. We've got a letter from Sec- Secretary Sean Duffy on, and it's not just about the plan.
That's right.
It's about the organization and who the organization represents. And so for me, it's like, where do we draw the line? Especially when we're talking about our values. Where do we draw the line? It's just words right now, just for the plan, but then it's gonna be for the organization and then it's gonna be jurisdictions. You have to change it too, because, and then it's going to be, so where do we actually stand for our values? And especially when it's the community that came out and said, this is a very important goal for us. So for me, like, I understand where the Transportation Policy Board was coming from, but just being that this letter came out, it's very strongly worded, six pages of it, about how they don't wanna see any of these languages, not only in a plan, but as the organization's goals. And then, or the organization's board members. And so I'm like, it's just gonna continue to bleed down. And, um, you know, as much as we bend, right? Like how much are we gonna continue to bend until we break? And, and that's where my concern is, is really coming from. And so, um, like I, again, understand and, uh, where they were coming from, but I, for me, I'm not in agreement with, with that decision.
And, uh, uh, one thing I just wanna, wanna make clear is T- TRPC as, as me and our staff, um, this was not a recommendation to change the language. Um, this has got to be, and this is what I said to the policy board. We need, our, our, you all and your, and your, your, your colleagues at the cities and the county, that, that's who makes up TRPC. And so we need that direction from the policy board, from council, on how our region wants to handle this. The other thing I, I do wanna mention is, uh, you brought up a, a recent memo from Secretary Sean Duffy. This came out after the TPB discussion. As, as I'm sure you, you know, new things are coming out almost daily. Um, and the point of that memo from, um, Secretary Duffy, um, as we understand it, was specifically to do that, to say, changing language is not sufficient. Um, we want to know you're not doing this work.
Yeah, so, I mean, for me, like the DEI and climate change work is like possibly the two most important things that I work on, the reason I ran for office. So, and I have a memo, which I keep, it came out like the first month of the administration where it said, those values were a waste of taxpayer dollars and do nothing to improve the lives of constituents, which is like so fundamentally wrong that like, the, yeah, I mean, there's no appeasement here. It's gonna, it's gonna have to happen the way it happens. They wanna punish us. It's gonna take voters to step up and say, that's not a good way for federal government to behave. And they need to see, people need to see the, the implications and the consequences of what's happening. And for us to try to run around appeasing, uh, to try to, you know, basically bail out the bad decisions of the federal government is not something that I'm interested in, so.
I'm, I'm not saying.
I know, but.
Pituitary, right? I'm not saying.
This is coming fast.
I know. And, and I, there's probably an argument to say.
Escalating fast.
There's probably an argument that you've said, no matter what we do, because of the state we are, we'll get nothing. Like I'm, there, there's probably an argument that can be said, we could, we could roll over and just say, you know, like com- total compliance to the overlord and we'll still get nothing. There's, I mean, that's a strong possibility, but, you know, like I, you know, I, I wanna, I, I like to believe that there's a way to retain your values and, you know, still be true to yourself while finding opportunities.
Well, T, I mean, the example is, and I'm not, I'm not discounting what you're saying, Commissioner Fournier, cause the TPB member, Rich reached out to me to, to tell me about the discussion, like, what do you think? They wanted my advice about it. And it wasn't Commissioner Mahia or anyone here, it was an outside member. And I was like, well, uh, and I was thinking along the lines, Commissioner Fournier, I'm like, well, okay, transportation is so heavily federally funded. It's the one, you know, it's a discreet area in a way. If it's really about, you know, DEI work is, you know, maybe a little bit less connected there than it is in other areas of our government.
Build a bridge.
Right, so I mean.
That's a simple thing.
This is the one thing that we have to do to kinda play this game, so to speak. You know, I was like, I don't know what I would tell you. I can't give you a clear answer on how I would go down. And then I heard Commissioner Mahia's thing about the memo that came out where it's like, okay, now they're gonna go after organizational work across the board. It's like, okay, well, obviously that's not gonna work. Like, so I, I mean, right there, I, I was, I was leaning your way in that sense of like trying to, how do we, you know, do the right thing to not. Right thing to not disadvantage our region, but that I, it, it became immediately apparent to me that this was. This was be- being seen through by the folks that are trying to root this out. They're, they're leveraging this into other areas. That are never gonna be something that I will ever support, not pro- promoting DEI work or climate change work in our county, so. Whatever consequences come out of that and the voters are mad at me about that, they can unelect me. But my mandate was to work on these things and I've been doing that and that's what I'm gonna continue to do, so.
Well, the money, like, this state pours out money to the federal government. There needs to be return on that investment, you know, we are a donor state. We are giving lots of money. To the federal government that, to, to fund these programs that we're entitled to a return on. And if we're not seeing a return on that, then the state needs to take a hard look on. On how we interact, you know, with the, with the rest of the nation.
Oh, and just on that, so, so far, the state has not had any disruptions. And re- reimbursements from the, the federal government so far.
I, I mean, I think about just what the FEMA, you know, what's going on with FEMA, like, we, our state puts a lot of money into FEMA programs. And FEMA is completely gutted, you know.
I, I should, I'm sorry, I should've said USDOT, uh, reimbursements, yeah.
Uh, so I'll ask a less political question. Uh, I was curious.
A lot of room for that.
Yeah. When we were, when you were going through the kind of, I mean, it, it sounded like that the. Kind of projects in the plan can be pretty broad, you know, you're talking about all transportation modes and these different goals. Including climate changes in there, cause that's what the previous administration told us to do. Um, and, and what we were trying to do locally, so we've got, um. So I guess my question is, are there things in there that relate, like, it's a scope extent to things like the EV? Um, structure, charging structure and like when you were talking about striping, that made me think about conversations we had when I first joined the board. About autonomous vehicles and all the different infrastructure that was gonna be needed to plan for the future transportation network. I didn't realize till I went to a conference in California a month ago that like in San Francisco, you can like be driven around by an autonomous vehicle. Yeah, I've never.
Yeah, when I was going through Phoenix, I looked over and there was a robot driving next to me and I.
Yeah, so I didn't.
Is this?
Because we talked a lot about it like seven years ago, six, seven years ago, and then I saw like nothing about it like in the last five years. I mean, I haven't been on TPB or TRPC anymore, so maybe I missed those conversations, but it made me think that this wasn't really moving. But in some places it is, so how does that fit into?
Yeah, great question. It did really slow down, um, but that doesn't mean it has stopped by any means. Um, and what it, meaning the companies that are developing autonomous vehicle technologies. Um, it, it, it slowed down after there were a couple fatal accidents that, that were very well-publicized. And so, it's, uh, over the past handful of years, it has really been targeted on proving the technology in those areas. San Francisco, Phoenix, um, there are a number of others. Where they, the, the companies are working on a track record of demonstrated safe performance. Um, before they, they really expand. And so it's not that any of that has gone away. We fully expect that we will continue to, to see autonomous technologies more and more integrated into the system. It's just, it wasn't necess- it's not happening at the pace that people initially thought it might.
And like, do we, do we, you know, I drive an EV and I've always, and I don't, I haven't done a ton of research into it. But it seems like there's a lot of like people throwing level-two EV chargers here and there, but that's not really what's gonna make it really easy for people. It's gonna have fast charging network like at gas stations or just as frequently as gas stations. And I'm just wondering, kind of, does that, does that something that we can fund through these means or is that?
Oh, def- definitely. It was a big part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that's still in place, um, and still funding projects. Um, that E- EV charging infrastructure was and, and continues to be a big area of emphasis. Right now, they, what they're working on, the, the federal funding for the most part is going towards, um, key corridors. Like for our state, they're, are trying to make sure that there are charging stations. I think it's every, roughly every fifty or sixty miles. Um, along I five and I ninety is, is, it, it was kind of the start for our state and other states are ta- have similar approaches. Um, so yes, building out that charging infrastructure, uh, was very much an area of emphasis. And I, and it, so now I guess it's a little uncertain, um.
But those are like more in the state's plans?
Those, the, they started funding at that state level. The, the idea was, let's get that, that, um, interstate. Connectivity taken care of, because the biggest, the biggest concern that people have, um, before adopting electric vehicles. Is that range issue. And so the, at the federal level, it was, let's address this range issue. By having a charging infrastructure to where I, I'm confident I could get, go from Olympia to San Francisco. If I, if I want to in my EV vehicle and I know I'm gonna be able to charge without too much concern.
It's already there.
It, it, it's pretty built out and a lot of that, I mean, a lot of that is new. A lot of that has been done over the past few years with bipartisan infrastructure law funding.
I, I recently, recently listened to a candidate, uh, you were there, uh, talking about, uh, regional air travel. Electric, uh, smaller, I don't wanna, I don't wanna call them drones, cause they're not drones, but like. Basically quadcopter.
Yep.
Six-person units. And he was saying that Lewis County Port is investing in a lot of infrastructure. For electrification to charge these types of vehicles. And there's virtually nothing being done in our region to prepare for that. And these are things that are like two years off to where if we had the infrastructure. We could have, uh, you know, electric flight out of the Port of Olympia. Up to Sea-Tac, traveling us to the airport in twenty minutes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about two years out, but it is, that is, so, um, people might remember. Um, a few years ago, there was quite a bit of discussion in this area about a state effort to look at. Uh, air, air, passenger air travel capacity and the need for, um, a new airport. The, that strategy has taken a bit of a pivot. And this is one of those reasons, is looking more at what can be done at existing regional types of airports. For, to do that connectivity within the state. So that you've, you've got, um, more capacity for, you know, those cross-state and international, um, flights. Out of Sea-Tac and out of, uh, pain, pain, anyway. Um, uh, and so right now, the, the group that is charged with looking at a, our air travel capacity in our state. They, that is one of the things that they are looking at, is that electric technology that is, is, you know. Short, fairly short distance, point-to-point, um, and they are kinda like drones, yeah.
Is that like, is it a new committee that's been formed?
It is.
Same old.
Not the same one.
And is that within TRPC or?
No, 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 this is at the state level, um, and so the, the effort.
What are we doing here to set the stage for that?
Oh, uh, I, I'm not aware of any discussion, really, along that front. Aside from, I, I've had some, some anecdotal conversations, uh, with Port of Olympia on this. I mean, they're certainly aware, um, but I can't speak to, to how, how much they might have dove into this.
Thank you. Other questions for Mark?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's go on to the Yelm Rainier Tenino Trail update.
Your chair, we have our Public Works team coming to the table. Give him a second till I get here. Karen, this is in response to the last, uh, update we provided. Touch base with the city of Yelm and also just corrected the misinformation about, um, the boundaries of the trail. And the fact that the city is around a portion of the trail. And so, uh, Karen's here to provide an update on the meeting that they had with, uh, city representatives. And we just coordinated to make sure we were all talking to the right folks. With that, Karen, I'll let you introduce yourselves to the team and.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, Karen Lees, um, Public Works Director. To my right is Mike Loman, our Road Operations Manager. Um, Road Operations has the Parks and Trails Program within. To my left is Ed Marsen, Parks and Trails Maintenance and Operations Manager. So, um, let's see if I can figure out how to use this, okay. Um, so again, as Leonard stated, this is a follow-up from our March twelfth, um, session. And we met then with, uh, our Public Works staff, met with City of Yelm staff on March twenty-seventh. So I'll just review some of the information, um, to provide context and then we'll go into the specific ask, ask. So again, the Yelm Rainier Tenino Trail is owned and maintained by Thurston County through our Public Works Parks and Trails Program. It's about one point six miles of the trail lie within the city of Yelm urban growth area. And here's the clarification, of those one point six miles, there are seven county-owned parcels located within the UGA. And the majority of those parcels are either fully or partially within the city limits and one parcel borders the city limits.
So, hold on, can you go back?
Yes.
When you say within the UGA, I've interpreted that to mean not in the city, not in the, in current county, but only in the UGA. But that's not what you ca- you can't possibly mean that, by the way, that's worded.
Cor- I mean, correct. We're saying that the, all of those parcels are within the city, within the UGA and the subset of that is the city. Does that make sense?
It does, but it doesn't, it's confusing to talk about it that way, because for us as the county, the whole distinction is city versus UGA. Cause UGA is county and city is not. So to say, like, I don't, that, that number seven doesn't, is confusing. So it would be like a lot easier to say. There are five cars within the city limits, but two parcels in the UGA.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Fair enough, fair enough.
The seven doesn't have any meaning to me, like, if that's the distinction, then like to say, the seven just is another number in my head rattling around that.
Okay, fair enough. So takeaway for this is the majority of the parcels are within the city limits. Okay, so the city of Yelm's request, their highest priority request is for a specific parcel of the Yelm Rainel- Rainier Tenino Trail. And we'll show a map here in just a minute. Um, they own the parcel that abuts that parcel, um, of our ownership. Uh, they intend to develop a parking lot on that parcel and because of how that parcel is shaped. They expect that some of the parking lot would extend into, um, county par- property. Um, they are asking and have, have asked for, uh, the county to go ahead and transfer ownership of that parcel to them. So they can proceed with their project and they're looking for grant funding. We did in our conversations with them, again, they have a, they don't have a specific plan. They have more of a conceptual parking model. Um, but they are looking, if I recall correctly, for some sort of like a one-way parking lot with some slanted angled parking. And it would exit off onto five oh seven. Is that your recollection?
Yes.
So here again is the map of those parcels. The blue arrow denotes the specific parcel. That they are interested in acquiring in the short term. Okay, and then the rest of the parcels are outlined there. Okay, so this is. Yes.
So, looking at the upper left, the pink is what and the blue is what?
In the, the.
In the vicinity map in the upper left corner?
So the, the blue is the city limits.
And the pink is the UGA? Like twice as big as the city? Okay, um, and then looking at the specific parcels. Um, the dotted line that corresponds to the blue. Very kind of faint dotted line.
The, the darker area off to the right, those are all within the city limits. The far parcel down at the very end of the curve, that borders the city limits. Cause you can see in the, the smaller diagram that the city kinda curves around. Does that make sense?
The city's broken into two pieces?
Well. This down here is this.
Oh, that's Rainier.
Rainier's down here.
Oh, okay, alright, yeah. Whoa, that would be the lead that the. I see you're the curl in the red, slightly, I gotcha.
Yeah.
And where does that?
The blue dotted line, I believe is the trail corridor itself, the path of the trail from the map.
Okay, and then the city limits on the bigger map is where?
Green.
Just the dotted lines?
There you go.
And the down here. Purple line here. Which is that curved part of the bus.
Oh, where it curves around, okay. I see, so we're kind of, it's like a bridge across.
Yeah, we're double, I'm double checking.
Yeah, Jared, I, I think to your point, um, we just wanna check to see if that pink area is unincorporated. Or is it UGA?
I think it's.
We're gonna, uh, that just seems really large for the UGA in Yelm, so I think it might be a combination. I think it's unincorporated and maybe a portion of it is UGA, so I'm.
Yeah, that would be crazy. I never saw the UGA being that big for Yelm.
I mean, this, this area in here is the area we're talking about.
Yeah, he's referring to the vicinity map and the margin.
Yeah, well, anyways, that's not that important. I was just trying to make sure I understood the map you're showing me. So, we, so, okay, this is what, I didn't really understand last time. So we've got city to the left and city to the right with an UGA bridge in the middle because of the shape of the city limits. And the red's basically bridging across.
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's confusing. And then, okay, so, all right, sorry, keep on.
Okay, and then again, the blue, the blue arrows, their specific parcel, high priority request. Um, and that's the specific parcel that abuts the, uh, parcel that they own. Okay, so here again, there's this little snapshot. Um, the requested parcel, again, denoted in blue, connects to the terminus of the trail to the right here. Um, those parcels are all within the city of Yelm limits. Um, that total of three parcels is about five, just under five and a half acres. Um, these parcels are connected to their downtown improvement plan. Um, they have at some point, uh, planned to have a bridge come across and that would, would, um, impact the very end parcel. The city has expressed a willingness to, um, entertain an ILA for all of the parcels within the city and UGA. Um, to maintain them. And then just as an awareness for, for all of us. They, they are in the process right now of annexing, moving forward with annexation of the parcels. Um, within the, by, in twenty twenty-five, and so they expect to come back and ask us at some point to transfer ownership of all of the parcels. That would be within their city limits.
So you're saying they're willing to explore an ILA? Do they want an ILA or are they ultimately, they just want to take ownership of the parcels?
Long-term, long-term, they would like, it has been expressed to us in that conversation that they would like to own the parcels within their city limits. And even that area right now that was shown in the UGA, they are in the process of annexing that. I will confirm that with Matt. They're working, working on annexing that parcel. So probably if we're sitting in in here in a year, all of those parcels will be within the city limits.
But when they, okay, but that doesn't change the ownership method, cause we own stuff within the city limits.
It doesn't change the ownership of the trail.
Correct. They, they have said they will, when they are doing, when they are completed that process, they will likely come back and ask for transfer of ownership.
Yeah, it'd be more of an argument of like, if we were gonna give them, if we were gonna give them the parts and city limit. It might make sense to give them the other two as well, cause those will be in ci- for consistency, those will be in city limits, is what they're saying.
Yeah, just for awareness, right? That, that's kinda what their thought is. They would like to own all of the trail parcels within their city limits.
I've already, I've talked to them at length as to why I don't think it's in their interest. And they have opportunity to, uh, partner with the county if we're there, but they don't have opportu- but they, they don't seem. Argument doesn't seem to resonate with them, so at this point, I'm like, okay. But my only concern is i- i- if we do transfer is that we have clear language. Uh, in there that says how they will maintain it according to our standards. And if they don't, I would want some kind of language in there like we did with the Moon Road Transfer. To where if they're not meeting the standards, that it, it goes back to us.
So, and I wanna just be clear.
Sorry, if I could just real quick, um, go back to the other slide, just wanna make sure for accuracy. That pink area is, is not the entire UGA. Um, the UGA is much smaller. It kinda hugs around the edges. Um, so we just want that for public record and those watching, that that pink area is not, uh, the UGA.
Huge UGA.
It, I mean, if we had a pointer, we can kinda point out, it does incorporate what, um, Karen said, that little pocket. It, I mean, if we had a pointer, we can kind of point out, it does incorporate what Karen said, that little pocket.
Pink in the middle?
Yeah.
And is that, that's like the golf course?
Here, this is all the pink, that's all the UGA. Can you use some mouse? You can see. Um, just so Commissioner Grant can see online.
Well, let's see, can I figure out how that.
So the golf, golf course is here.
Ju- just one second.
Ossman is here, this neighborhood here, and then after this neighborhood, that neighborhood ends up there.
Yeah, it's, we'll stop in the screen share because, um, I'm having some viewing issues with our commissioner that's remote. So let us see if we can readjust and.
It is a light, so it is very difficult to pick up, but there is a striped line in the area that is just unincorporated. The UGA is the pink part of the stripe.
I don't think that's that important for this discussion. I just wanted to make sure I understood the map.
Fair enough. This is a good example of how we can be, uh, work on our map displays for clarity.
And, and I'm, my, my, I need to mention this because I know that, um, our partners in Yelm, Washington, we just don't want to communicate that there's misinformation. So thank you Assistant County Manager for doing the research and understand that it's probably not displaying because the color's so light. Are there any issues you want to suggest? Okay.
And I want to come back and make sure, the highest priority request that the City of Yelm has made at this point in time is for this particular parcel with the blue arrow, right? Like, that is really what their short-term priority is, is to obtain transfer, transfer ownership of that. We're also just pointing out though, that that parcel, if we were to transfer ownership of that particular parcel, abuts two parcels that are the terminus of the trail. So that would create sort of a checkerboard.
And we'd be maintaining a couple and then they'd be maintaining and it'd be a little bit confusing.
They, they are all so interested in the entire.
They are, they are willing to take any and all parcels that we're discussing today in terms of ownership.
So for the sake of staff time and resources, if, if we're gonna consider providing one, and the comment you just made, Cher, about it being checkerboard, um, we would want a consideration for, if we're gonna do that work, it'd be hard to do that work, then come back, do that work a little bit more in case.
I like Commissioner Fornier's idea of the, kind of like the moon road language that we had, is that reasonable?
They were certainly open to any types of agreements that we would, you know, language for that. If we wanted to maintain the, um, the name, right, access, I'm, I'm, I have every reason to expect that they would be open to those conversations.
And we'll say that staff have informed that Yelm does a fantastic job of maintaining the trail. It is, um, and they put, um, staff and resources into it. And so we believe that their continued partnership would, would continue a high level of maintenance at the trail. Is that correct?
Yes. Commissioner Grant?
All right, hopefully, you guys can hear me?
Perfect.
Okay, um, sorry, I lost internet there for a second and it popped me off. Anyway, I just want to pipe in and, and just, um, you know, add my support to this. Um, I think that one of the, the biggest things that, um, and I, I would believe that staff would agree with me and Leonard would agree with me is that, uh, you know, Joe DiPinto and others and all of the people working out at Yelm are willing to do whatever it takes. You know, they're very collaborative and, um, and really have a bigger, a long-term plan for, um, all of this area. And so I'm in support of, uh, transferring ownership. And I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever we come up with, i- if it's, you know, adding language that you guys are talking about, I'm sure that they would be, um, in agreement with that.
So long as they understand that, you know, we built pickleball courts and bathrooms in Rainier because our trail's there. And whenever, when our trail is no longer there, they don't get to come ask for pickleball courts and bathrooms because we're no longer in that area. And I've tried to say that, and I, I think, I think it's clear, but five years from now.
They may regret their decision.
They may, but we can refer back to this discussion.
So here were the, the options. Again, these are the very same options that we discussed at the last meeting. Of course, the last one is we can do up to or any combination thereof of a transfer of ownership.
Thanks for your flexibility, Karen. And so what we're looking for today, Commissioner's, is direction to staff to, um, take a certain path so that we can start working with the City of Yelm and preparing that for formal board, um, decision and consideration through the business meeting.
I, I would be in favor or propose, or I don't, I don't know, I don't think we can make a motion right now, but I would, I, I'd like, with consent from the commission, I would recommend council, recommend staff, draft a language, draft an agreement or a contract that transfers the full ownership of the interested parcels. So long as it includes language that states, uh, uh, clearly that, uh, they would be required to maintain, required, there would be required maintenance levels and design standards that match, uh, those of the county, along with language that returns the property to the county if those standards are not met. And we did something like that with the Moon Road transfer with the Shamus tribe.
Mike, sure, what, what I would also suggest is adding what Karen mentioned is that it, um, the language that it remains open access as a kind of trail, and that we keep, they maintain the name.
Maintain naming rights, yes.
And access, so those three components.
I see. So if we all direct, if we agree to direct that, and then we'll come back for board?
Yeah, it'll come in.
Is everybody in compliance with that or? Alright, seems like everybody's in agreement.
And can I just clarify, are we talking about now all of the parcels? When you say the parcels, we're talking about this entire grouping of parcels?
All the way from Roy to the end of Sanino, that they are now maintaining.
City limits and city UGA.
Yes, thank you. So the 1.6 miles.
Seven parcels, see, it didn't, I'm wrong, it did come back to the importance. They're also in charge of both Burfitt Park now.
As in closing, thank you so much, uh, Public Works Team, Parks Team for your engagement with the City of Yelm. And very appreciative of our city partners for coming together and having to be clarifying the next forward.
Can I take a little, uh, real quick? I was gonna bring this up at the, like, at the end, but since Public Works Team's probably leaving, I just want to give you guys a shout out because we got this email from somebody, a constituent, that was like really, really impressed with Mike Murphy and his work, uh, on some noxious weed issues. And it's the kind of email that just warms your heart as a commissioner and hopefully you as a director and staff about how helpful he was. I mean.
Do you want to read the email just so that way it's on the record? Because I think that goes a long way.
I am hoping you can share this email with Public Works Director and County Manager. Yesterday while working in my field, I came across an odd-looking weed using an online identification tool. It appeared to be poison hemlock. Reading warnings about poison hemlock really started to worry me and I was not sure what to do with it. I decided to contact the county noxious weed office for advice on how I should proceed. Wow, what a great experience. Mike Murphy answered on the first ring and had doubts about it being poison hemlock based on my location. He suggested I send him a picture of the plant so he could try to identify it. Mike immediately called back and told me it did in fact look like poison hemlock. And since he was in the area, he'd be willing to stop by and investigate further. When Mike arrived, he confirmed the plant was in fact poison hemlock and removed the plant. Looked around for other plants but found none. Mike answered all my questions about the plant and really set my mind at ease as I was somewhat worried about the dangers of the plant. Mike also said he would log the site and send a reminder this time next year to reevaluate this site and make sure it did not return. I'm very impressed and appreciative of the great service Mike provided and hope he will pass this along.
Yay, Mike. Thank you so much for asking that a lot. That is great customer service in action.
Absolutely. Thank you. Alright, you guys have been doing a good job on the ditches.
What's that?
I've seen a lot of ditch work being done too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is under Commissioner Items, defense, uh, Commissioner Lee Klaus, uh, defense issue. I think we were supposed to expect him prosecuting attorney.
Prosecuting attorney will be here in 10 minutes.
Okay, shall we move on to the next report? Let's go to reports and we'll double back. External board reports, this is a, a commissioner check-in kind of combined with today's work session. So we don't have to have a separate meeting this afternoon. So just your kind of standard board, Commissioner Klaus, anything?
Nope, I gave mine yesterday, I don't have anything new.
Okay. Commissioner Mejia?
Mm-mm.
Nothing, okay, Commissioner Fornier?
Uh, I thought I gave a pretty extensive one yesterday. Nothing exciting has happened between now and last night.
Okay.
That I can recall.
Nothing for me either.
Alright, alright, alright. Sometimes they're different, uh, if you're reporting to the public versus, you know, you might get more in the weeds, something that the public wouldn't really care about, but as commissioners, we might care about something more specific that might come up here. But that's, um, I don't know that I have.
Sure, you want to take a 10-minute recess?
Yeah, let's just take 10 and come back at.
Okay.
10:30. Five. Anyone else want to come through?
Six, we're back from a quick recess. Everyone is present. We have prosecuting attorney John Toonheim here for this last item, which is related to the recall defense for Commissioner Klaus. And I guess this is backup, kind of Commissioner Klaus was asking Commissioner, I mean, the prosecuting attorney had reached out.
This is, this is being recorded, correct?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I have a question about that, but at this point, yeah, we're on live stream. So, the case, and maybe the prosecutor could give us a kind of a summary of where we stand procedurally, but I know the case has a, is in a different procedural place and that potentially led to a different analysis on your part, which the board then could then hear from and be informed by.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the, the way this came up is Commissioner Klaus, sent an email, I think to both Commissioner Menzer, as in his role as chair, and myself, asking us to kind of take another look at the defense issue because the ca, the posture of the case has changed a little bit. And it seemed to me like a, a reasonable question, at least for the board to take on. And of course, Commissioner, if you want to fill in, because you have as much working knowledge of the, where the process is, I think, as I do right now. But, um, so the recall petition, as you know, was filed. It went through the initial process of titling and went to be in front of a Superior Court judge to determine if there was sufficiency on the part of the petition to actually move forward in the recall process. And the Superior Court judge, and I, I believe it was a visiting judge from out of county, made the decision that the petition on its face was not sufficient to go forward, that it didn't actually provide a sufficient basis for the recall process to move forward. I will tell you that that decision is actually consistent with my own review. We didn't provide any advice or support at all, but when I, we did obviously receive the petition and look at it because the Civil Division takes on the titling process of that. If it moves forward, and my initial assessment was the same, that it, the petition itself on its face didn't meet the burden and test necessary to move forward towards recall. But again, there had been a prior decision that this would, that the county would not provide defense, at least at that stage in the proceedings. So we didn't, uh, we weren't involved in that at all. And I believe Commissioner Klaus had her private counsel representing her during that process. The petitioner, who is Mr. West, a well-known litigant in the state, now, as my understanding, has filed a petition to the Supreme Court for review. That process, we've done that process before. It's been a few years, but we went to Supreme Court in the recall petition that was filed against our former sheriff, Sheriff Snaza. And in that instance, the trial court had actually found that there was sufficient basis to move forward with a recall. We, we appealed that decision and prevailed in the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said that that was not, uh, was not sufficient basis to move forward. So we have some experience in our shop of having, having handle these matters through our appeal. My personal feeling is, uh, we have the capacity to do this. We have the ability to do it. It is because it is a limited project that basically is the production of a brief and perhaps oral argument if the, if the court decides to hear oral argument. We can do that within existing resource. So I don't need any, I wouldn't need any kind of budget extension or additional budget to do it. And I, I think at this point, my own personal assessment again is that, you know, it's one thing to go into the trial court where that initial question has been, is being considered, but now we have a Superior Court judge that has basically said the petition is insufficient. And the litigant on the other side has decided to try to continue to press on despite the adverse ruling that they've had. I, I personally think that puts the case in a little different posture in terms of whether the county should come in and defend. Because in some ways, where it would be, you know, obviously defending Commissioner Klaus in terms of the actual recall process, but we would in some ways also be defending the trial court decision that was made, denying the petition and dismissing the, or dismissing the petition. And that, to me, seemed to be enough of a difference that it was worth coming back and having you all talk about whether you would be comfortable with us moving forward. The statute's very clear. It requires the consent of both the prosecuting attorney and the Board of County Commissioners. I'm here to say that I'm prepared to give consent to do it in my capacity, but ultimately, the question then reverts to all of you. So I thought I'd be here today to answer questions. Obviously, Commissioner Klaus may want to, you know, speak to her. It's her request, so speak to that. But I just wanted to be here to be able to talk more about procedure and answer questions if they've come up, as they come up.
Thank you. Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you. I'll just say, thanks for the overview. I appreciate you being here. I appreciate your time and consideration. I'm here to, you know, fill in any gaps. I can answer any questions, commissioners, or any, you know, or you have about the process, but I'm not here to vote on this today. I'm going to be recusing myself from this vote, just for, you know, concerns about conflict of interest. And I came in here today planning to recuse myself if, you know, even a single commissioner had any concerns about me voting on this. And we have this email laying out, you know, concerns directly connected to an RCW that lay out the potential conflict of interest very clearly. So I'm planning to recuse myself, just for what that's worth, so that everyone knows. And then, um, as far as the process, you laid it out pretty perfectly. I will add that there was another layer. When Mr. West appealed this to the Supreme Court, he also filed a motion for reconsideration because he had a copy of an unredacted report, or an almost all-the-way unredacted, not completely, report, and submitted that thinking this will get it reconsidered and maybe have a different outcome. And that was also turned down by the court. So now he's gone through the Superior Court twice and has been, it's been determined to be not sufficient two times. So that's all I wanted to add at this point, but I'm happy to answer questions as we talk about it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So you said, prosecutor, that you have the capacity and ability to do it. I'm not talking about the ability piece. I know you're very capable as an attorney. I've seen you in action.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be me personally, although I might have input on it, but I have a, I have a highly capable civil team.
But I'm talking maybe about the capacity of your civil team. We've heard it here over many budget sections, how spread thin your civil division is. So, I mean, coming in to take this additional, even though it's, it's not going to be something that drags on, you know. It surprises me from, from you, because I've heard it over many budgets, you know, seasons now, where you've been advocating for, you know, because your civil division is, is tied tight and whenever we're requesting for things, you know, it's, it's, it's tight. So.
Yeah. There's a couple of things that I've looked at and kind of coming to the place where I'm at on this that I've already kind of alluded to. One is, it's a very defined project. So it's not like if we were filing a lawsuit in a civil case that could go on, or we were defending a lawsuit that could go on and have lots of discovery and things like that. It's, that can be an ongoing piece of work that can last, you know. Well, you know, right? It could go on for years and years and years. And that's a very, that's very much a different scope of work than a defined project in terms of a brief and an oral argument in the Supreme Court. And I think what, at this point, even the board's consent could be limited to that. I'm not sure if there would be additional litigation. I think the only resort and part of the petitioner would be to try to file a new and different petition. And I think that would be a new question again. So this is a very definable project. The other thing I consider is that if, if this had been a different issue, where there was, it was very clear that the petition was being filed, say, based on a discretionary decision, which is, that's been our experience, right? That was the Snaza case. I think, Commissioner, was there something that was filed against you at one point in time? Two of them? And they were, you know, they were clearly, they were clearly insufficient on their face because they involved discretionary decision. We'd take that on and it wouldn't even be an issue, right? And so we'd just, we'd just take that on and we prioritize our work accordingly. And we make it happen. But again, it's a very definable scope of work. So that has made me, in thinking about this, it's a little bit different than if we were defending, say, a civil action that arose out of this, as I was talking about, or something like that. Because it is that definable scope of work, I'm much more comfortable taking it on, you know, because it's a single project. And I think we can manage it within existing work.
Well, for now, if we were to have other civil matters pop up, then, I, I mean, that are in the interest of the full board, right? Like, that's, that's my concern, you know. And, um, I'm also wondering in regards to, you know, civil division charges, internal rates. You have a budget for that, that's kind of set aside and out of that, right? And so as, that's dwindling down because of this, even if it's scoped out, when we're already facing a, a budget, like, I'm like, we cannot increase that. And just, we're right at the beginning of the year. We have the rest of the year to go, especially in, in, you know, we don't know what's going to be coming up this year. So I just have, have concerns, just from your explanation still on costs and capacity.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to it, and, um, and, you know, I, I say this just telling you what my internal analysis is of our capacity to do it. There's always the, you know, the cost issue is always there. When you're talking about in-kind, kind of work, right? So we wouldn't be contracting out to another lawyer. We wouldn't need additional resources to do this outside. Those resources are already committed because they exist within the salaries of the existing deputies and their exempt employees. So those, that, those resources are committed already, one way or the other. So the issue then is, how is it allocated? That's the indirect cost model, is to what, you know, what place do these hours get allocated? And it's not, it's not like we do billable hours. We actually don't do billable hours. It's formulated through the indirect formula, whatever that is. Please don't ask me to explain that. So I, I actually don't expect it to have a, a significant influence on the indirect rate or the indirect costs because, again, it's, it's already allocated time and expense. The issue, and this is really the heart of it, is, right? We have other work that comes in, right? And it's just a matter of, of allocating it out, prioritizing, making it happen. But that, that's what we do. We do that every day. And we have things that come in and that are unexpected, and we just, we deal with it. Again, I, I want to reiterate, if this was a bigger project, I think I would have a much different answer to that question in terms of our capacity to take it on without having to ask for additional resources or even, even saying that it would, you know, kind of dominate the time of the, of a lawyer or the lawyers. I think that would, it would be a different answer. But because we're talking about a very definable project, that's why I thought it was worth reconsidering, or at least considering it for this limited purpose.
Commissioner Grant?
You go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Grant?
Okay, thanks for bringing that information forward. You know, I am open, the first thing I want to say is I'm open to hearing my colleagues' thoughts on this. And, but at this moment, my perspective, just hearing the prosecutor talk about, you know, his perspective, that I'm in favor probably at this moment of supporting the attorney fees. You know, because we've done this, you know, because in the past, and, and I'll explain a little more about this, but for me, but it becomes pretty easy for me to make a decision on this, just based on the fact that in the past, if, when someone was recalled, automatically the prosecutor would defend them. You know, that Sheriff Snaza, I think Ty had a recall. I mean, and because the prosecutor has confirmed that it's appropriate and that known the resources are needed, you know, I think that and that no new resources are needed, you know, I think that, that makes me more inclined to support this. You know, I know we didn't approve fees before for Commissioner Klaus, but that was different. And, you know, those are based on misconduct or different, you know, defending actions that she took at one point in time. And this isn't about that. This is about the right to representation for a recall. And if I was facing a recall and if, or if you were facing a recall, I would want that same support. And so when I think about equity and fairness, if we're going to offer legal support to some, I think we need to offer it to all when it comes to recall efforts. And so, again, open to hearing others' perspectives, so as well.
Commissioner Fornier.
Yeah. It's, it's not automatic. It's, it's a decision that we make. And we make it on a bunch of different factors. Just like when Clerk Enlow came in here and we were asked, it was clearly an issue of her performing her duties that brought the question. We, we chose not to provide legal counsel when we were called, when we were asked last time regarding Commissioner Klaus, because it was clearly not within her, within her duties. And I, I just, I, I wrote up remarks because, you know, this is, I've got a lot of thoughts on this and I, and I want to make sure that I'm staying consistent. So I'll, I'll just, I'll read, read what I wrote up that kind of sums up my opinion and then I'll, I'll probably even, and make this available to the public just so I want it clearly documented where I stand. "Colleagues, as a board, we are entrusted with the fiscal responsibility of stewarding taxpayer dollars and upholding the integrity of this institution. With that responsibility comes the obligation to make decisions that reflect accountability, consistency, and respect for that trust, public trust. Last year, this board faced an extraordinarily and deeply regrettable situation. One of our fellow commissioners hired her intimate partner as her full-time executive assistant. This decision made outside of professional norms and prudent boundaries led to a cascade of problems, errors in judgment, inappropriate workplace conduct, HR complaints, public controversy, and ultimately, a lawsuit that cost Thurston County taxpayers $300,000. That figure does not account for the time lost, the reputational damage to the county, or the erosion of public trust that resulted. To put that loss in perspective, $300,000 could have provided over 450,000 meals to residents facing food insecurity. It's an estimate based on .66 per meal. It could have provided emergency shelter for 250 individuals for a month. It could have funded two deputy sheriff positions for an entire year. It could have supported critical contracts or mental health and addiction services that directly save lives. Instead, these resources were spent mitigating the fallout from personal decisions that had no nexus with the official duties of the role. When Commissioner Klaus requested county-funded legal defense for the initial recall petition, this board denied that request. We made that decision because the recall effort arose from her personal misconduct, not from actions undertaken in the execution of her public duties. At that same time, we issued a public censure and a vote of no confidence, reinforcing our view that the actions in question were unacceptable and solely her responsibility. Now, we are being asked to reverse course and provide funding for Commissioner Klaus's appeal in the same matter. But the fundamental facts have not changed, and neither has the rationale for our prior decision. This appeal is still rooted in the same personal conduct, and therefore, in my view, it is inappropriate to now ask taxpayers to pay for the defense. I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Klaus has shown effort in recent months working to better understand workplace ethics, participating in a structured hiring process, and demonstrating a more professional approach. These steps are welcomed and commendable, but they do not erase the past, nor do they alter the basis for this appeal. This is a moment for integrity. To approve this request now would not only contradict our earlier decision, but send a dangerous message. This serious personal misconduct may be forgiven with time or revisionist thinking, and that public funds can be used to clean up personal mistakes. We must be consistent, we must be accountable, and above all, we must remember that we serve the people of Thurston County, not ourselves. Therefore, I respectfully urge my fellow commissioners to uphold the board's previous position and vote to deny this second request for public funding of Commissioner Klaus's legal defense in the recall appeal. Let me be clear, this is not punitive, it is principled. The public has already paid too high a price for these mistakes. It is time to move forward with a firm commitment to accountability, transparency, and respect for our collective role as stewards of the public good. That's my comments. Thank you.
I will make my comments. I was conflicted at the time we were initially asked because the, while I supported the board's actions with censure and all those pieces that Commissioner Fornier outlined, this was someone taking, you know, a decision, an act of Commissioner Klaus's and putting it in an inappropriate legal context. I was pretty sure that there was no basis for the, the action that, you know, we all disapproved of to be a basis for recall. I had an informal conversation with the prosecutor about it. That was his sense as well. Sure enough, the Superior Court validated our thinking, which is that that shouldn't have been brought. Like, that, in this, it's hard to separate out the context, but this is a different context. This is a context where a citizen took something and tried to, took something that was bad that we'd all disapproved of, but tried to exploit it in an inappropriate legal context. So that created a conflict for me. I think I ultimately voted not to support it, but in light of the prosecutor's kind of talking about the, you know, the different posture that it's in and his ability to handle it with minimal resources expended, I, I would support it at this juncture. Like I say, it's not to discount some of the things Commissioner Fornier outlined, but I see this as a different situation. And I disapproved of Sheriff Snaza's act. It was kind of a discretionary decision, but, you know, I went ahead and quickly and without thought, you know, voted to provide him the legal support that he got that ultimately was helpful. This is a little different. Everyone's a little different. You know, mine was obviously something, I thought I did the right thing, because I did it. Sheriff Snaza was something, I didn't think he did the right thing, but, you know, it fell within a certain context. In this case, I very much believe Commissioner Klaus did not do the right thing in some of her choices. But the question is, does, does, does anyone get to take that into the recall thing and, and, and meet the criteria? It doesn't meet the criteria. So that changes it for me a little bit, so. Commissioner Grant.
Yeah, and I guess that's the part where I, I didn't explain myself real well, but I think I agree here with Ty in the, and I appreciate that, you know, your statement, Wayne. And, and, you know, I think that, you know, I think we're all kind of sitting in this place where, you know, we, we made the decision not to support Commissioner Klaus's defense. And she went to court and was defended and paid her defense and paid and won, you know? And so like, she did, you know, she took the consequences and she went and paid and she won. But what she, she is not responsible for is Arthur West, you know, going to the state, you know, moving this on again. And that's, that's kind of where it gets, that's where it gets for me, where it's like, okay, it's, it's a filing by Arthur West and it's happened to us before or to other commissioners. It could happen to any of us again. And, and I just think that because this is, is something, again, with the prosecutor, and I just agree with, like, what the prosecutor is saying, is that this is something that could be pretty one and done. And, and I just think that we should be, you know, that it's not Emily's fault if she already went to court, already defended herself, already won. And so I'm, I'm more inclined to support this.
To me, this is just a continuation of the process. Would Arthur West be filing anything if it wasn't for the misconduct? No.
Maybe.
Well, I know, he wouldn't.
File against me for nothing.
Sure, but this.
Anyone could file stuff against any of us for anything.
But it is clearly related to the issue of misconduct.
Commissioner here.
Thank you. I'm not inclined. For me, I voted for Commissioner Menzor to receive, I was part of the board, I think, and want the two matters.
The second.
The second matter. And the reason I voted for him to receive, and I voted for other electeds as it's come along, has been, you know, talking about fairness and equity. It's because it's been during them performing their job duties and, as a commissioner. And when this recall came through, I didn't fit, feel like it fit the scope of the performance or the duties of a, of a commissioner. And when I voted for Commissioner Menzor's, it was based specifically on a decision he had taken on his official role as a commissioner. And so this, for me, is just not fit. I understand kind of where prosecutor, where you're coming from. But, you know, for me, this is a process that's laid out in RCW. Whether I agree with, with it or not, and how it's playing out, I, like, I cannot bring myself to vote for this additional expenditure at this time. For me, you know, I'll be, remain consistent with my previous vote not to cover that. So, you know, that's kind of where I stand.
So I think that it's, we don't have consent, we don't have majority consent with the extension and the two. So I think that closes that question.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not surprised by the conversation at all, but I just felt like it was, it was a point in time that it was worth bringing back for, for the conversation to occur.
It's appreciated.
And frankly, just so Commissioner Klaus could, could hear the conversation and know where her request is.
The steps she needs to take, obviously, which is important. All right, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. So if there, if anybody remembered a report on an external board, let me know. Otherwise, we're done. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.